I'd like to call the Buckingham County Planning Commission work session to order this evening. As you know, I am the zoning administrator. Our chairman and our vice chairman are unable to participate in the work session. So at this time, in order for the meeting to continue, if we could take nominations from the floor for a chairman to preside over the work session this evening.
Make a motion that Steve Doryer be the chairman tonight.
I second it.
Is there any other discussion? We could just take a vote.
Are we voting on, are we doing this by hand?
It would be by raising hand.
All right.
Looks like we are, have five out of six members voting yes and one member abstaining. But it looks like Representative Doryer will preside as chairman this evening, and I'll pass that gavel to him. Thank you, sir.
Already called, like to call it the meeting to order Buckingham County Planning Commission, August 19th. Ms. Gooden will do the invocation and Mr. Cruz will do our pledge allegiance. Let us stand.
Father God, for the people who've gathered here to do the work of Buckingham County, best for Buckingham County.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. We'll have to establish a quorum. Six out of eight, we do have a quorum. Adoption of agenda. What we deem to do there, Nick?
No changes.
No changes? Okay, okay, we need to vote on that, so.
Yes.
All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous, agendas adopted. Okay, discussion topic, comprehensive plan with Commonwealth Regional Council, draft five and draft six. Yes, sir. Are you not?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
A question before he proceeds. With regard to section six, is that a brand new section?
Yes.
Thank you.
I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Will you be pulling that up on the screen? Okay.
Actually, it should be on your screen. Pulling it up also on the present.
Oh, I see, I'm on the wrong one. Okay.
Alrighty, so first, we can go through the revisions to the land use section that were made. Should have the red line changes that were made from the last work session to now. I did draft a little overview to go through the changes with you, and then we can have questions, recommendations, suggestions. But first, just kind of wanted to mention that one of the major updates throughout the document is a shift in the language from definitive terms like will, do, to more suggestive language like may or could. And this change is to maintain flexibility in planning efforts, ensuring that the county is not overcommitted to any specific actions, but remains open to different approaches as we move forward. But specifically, just a few kind of grammar changes in the introduction and the community input highlights. But the more major changes start in the current land use portion of the section. And the description of the Buckingham County's current land use has been updated to highlight its growth potential more effectively. The revised version now better captures the county's strengths such as its rich natural resources, community spirit, and strategic location, making it an attractive place for growth. For the land use framework and zoning districts, the core content regarding the land use framework and zoning districts are unchanged. We did refine the language to improve clarity and readability and added mining to the M2 industrial district, allowing for larger scale manufacturing and processing activities. This ensures that the purpose and regulations of each zoning district are clearly understood. For future land use planning and growth strategies, there were some significant changes for the village centers. We revised the vision for the village centers to be more general and broad. And the specific details about each center have been removed to avoid overcommitment and to provide flexibility for future development. For the growth corridors, we adjusted the language to make the policies more suggestive rather than definitive. For example, instead of establishing policies outright, we now suggest considering them, allowing for more flexibility.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I had a question, well, more of a comment. Looking at the growth, the, the centers, as you described them, I noticed they were very general. And I especially wanted to ask you, Steve, about the centenary and the Glenmore Village areas. I looked at the definition and one, it says, for centenary says, located along Route 20 extending towards the James River. But doesn't it go to the James River? Was that what we had discussed? That was one. Not just toward, if you started the centenary, where do you stop? Ali's, you know, I thought we talked about to the James River, which to the boundary, to the Buckingham boundary line.
Now, in the, in the section five growth corridor that Tyler completed with all the necessary changes, centenary growth corridor or village is discussed as and documented as located along Route 20 extending towards the James River in the northern part of the county. So that is actually in the draft of section five with all of the changes.
With all the changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just, it just seemed as like towards, and I was just like, how far towards? And I was really under the impression that it went to the county, to the river, because that's the county line, all the way towards Scottsville.
Yes, ma'am, and in the red line, if you'll see everything that has been stricken from the record, the first sentence says that. It's kind of hard to see with the red, but it is those changes and it does indicate extending to the James River at the, in the northern part. So, does that seem to capture?
I was just asking, I'm asking for clarification because I thought we were saying to the James River, that's what I had. So I'm just asking for my clarification.
Okay.
What this body did. And the other definition was the Glenmore Village area. Because it says between, between 20 and 56. And Yogaville could be between 20 and 56. And I think of Glenmore area, I think of 655, Howardsville Road, Jerusalem Church, Firehouse kind of thing. So is there a better, and Steve, I'm looking at you, is there a better description that we could do for that? Because just between 20 and 56, that's the same description for, could be Yogaville too. And I think we're just trying to cut, sort of define the areas a little bit.
Probably just encompass around Glenmore and maybe a five mile, maybe not even five mile radius. But I would think it would be less than going to Route 56.
So it'd be more like Howardsville, Glenmore Road. Because it meant, I think it, somewhere I saw mentioning the store. But in that area, the store, the churches, the fire department.
Right, that's all within a one mile radius.
That's all within a, right in that.
Right, that was the Glenmore community.
That is the Glenmore community.
Down Firehouse Road, the church down to How, I mean, it could go to Howardsville, but it, it may not need to go that far. But we, we wouldn't have to encompass all the way to 56.
No, but I'm saying, but if you say from 20 to 56.
Yeah.
That takes in my house too, and I don't live in Glen, you know.
That's right, that's right.
And that takes in Yogaville.
Sure.
Howardsville, a lot of areas in Buckingham, and I thought we were trying to, and I want to say define certain areas. I'm just asking you, what do you think about that definition? Should just, should it be Glenmore Road and Howard, Howardsville Road intersect in that area? Or 655 and 602? Because we use route numbers on here.
Anybody else have any feelings on, any, the other commissioners have any feelings on this?
J.D.? I think it would be good to kind of narrow it down a little bit more than, that's a big area, like you said, between 20 and 56.
I was just asking because I'm trying to figure out who else knows the area. The three of us do, yeah, J.D. knows.
Yeah, J.D. knows, yeah.
I'd think, you know, more so our store, a little ways north of there, and maybe a little ways what I consider Glenmore. Little bit west, like towards Firehouse Road and all. But, once you get over towards our way, nobody really calls that Glenmore.
No, no.
So what would, what description would you use here? That's, that's what I'm asking because it's not between 20 and 56.
Oh.
It's more at the intersection of 602 and 655.
Could we, we, could we narrow that down?
Oh, yeah, I, I think it's a great suggestion. This was just trying to, I was just trying to give a general description of the area, but I wasn't sure exactly how to describe it. So, yeah, I'm definitely open to, you know, giving a better description of where the Glenmore Village Center is.
I don't know how we would come up with the boundaries on it because it's so rural there. But we could, we could run it, I'd say a one mile radius around Glen, around the store, Glenmore Store would pretty much take care of everything there.
Okay.
But those routes are 66, 602 and 655.
Yeah.
Centered around that intersection.
And Firehouse, down Firehouse Road.
And down Firehouse Road.
Because that's Glenmore Community.
Yeah, I think an intersection would be helpful because I know that's usually typical for village centers too. So if it's 602 and 655 and maybe a one mile radius around that area.
Extending from the intersection, the Glenmore, extending from the intersection of 655 and 602.
That'll work.
Yeah.
Because the road names can change because they, they kind of morph going down from Glenmore Road to Jerusalem Church to Manio.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. Yeah, I would say those two village centers were the toughest ones for me to try to define the location since they are newer.
Centenary and?
Centenary, yes.
Yeah.
But, and for that one, so are you thinking that rather than towards, it would be better just to say to the James River? I, I think that's what.
Clarification, I thought we were going to the James River.
Yeah, but centenary is almost like Glenmore now, if you think about it. It's just that little village, I live two miles down below there. We, I don't consider, consider myself living in centenary, but we wouldn't have to go as far as the river on that, I don't think.
But did you want to develop just the centenary or that area? Considering how it's developing down 20, that's, that was the question. Consider how things are developing down 20.
Well, it's a growth corridor.
It's a growth corridor, right. And so I think starting at centenary, in the centenary, down two just identifies the length of the growth quarter.
Down Route 20 north, I think is more where the growth quarter.
Yeah, so I think that, so the growth corridor is defined as going all the way to the county line along Route 20.
To Scottsville.
To Scottsville, right, to the.
So it's not just centenary, it's also along 20 that we were talking about, correct? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll tell you, we probably could just do it extending north on Route 20 instead of going west. Because when you go west back to the river, that's really not the centenary area. So if you could do it north to Scottsville.
Okay.
To the county line, yeah.
I think those are great suggestions.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and definitely feel free, as you have comments, to bring them up. For the, the growth corridors portion of this section, we adjusted the language to make the policies more suggestive rather than, rather than definitive. And that's just to allow for more flexibility.
Excuse me, are we on, still on section five?
Yes.
Okay.
And then for the high growth areas, another place where the language was changed to be more general, without really committing to any specific actions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
At this point in time, I, and I, you've answered a big part of the question I had. I did not, I did not know that there was an attempt afoot to make this thing as flexible as you're attempting to make it flexible. I mean, is that, was that an edict from the board? I mean, where did it come from? Because the, it, let me, let me explain where I'm coming from on this thing. We, when, when you put together a plan, you're either going to do something or you're not, okay? Essentially, it's a plan. I mean, even if, if you say you're going to do it, it's a plan, doesn't necessarily mean you have to do it, it's your, it's your plan. But when you put together a recommendation, a consulting recommendation, what you're saying is you may like to do this, or you could do that, or this is something that's an option for you, or these are alternatives. You know, if we're putting together a comprehensive plan, it seems to me that we get into section five and six, the same thing. If, if there's not a definitive plan, then it becomes a letter of recommendation. So the question is, who's recommending? And if it's CRC recommending to us these things, by the way, there are a lot of things that I agree in here. I mean, I thought it was, you know, you touched all the points and I'm in agreement with them. But I don't necessarily agree that it's an alternative. Or if we're going to do it, we ought to say we will do this, or we intend to do this, or it's within our plan to do this. And so I'm curious to find out why it is you wanted to soften it.
I was just given feedback to make the changes to allow for more flexibility in the planning processes for the county.
I think that, and, and in common to that, I think we have flexibility. I think the comprehensive plan is a great document, I mean, it, it really is, and it's a good planning document, but that's what it is. It's a planning document. When the rubber meets the road, it starts here. People come in, they start talking with us about what it is they want to do. We take a look at the comprehensive plan, take a look at the map, we take a look at what their projects are, and we try to make recommendations to the board that makes some sense. Sometimes it's not, it doesn't follow the plan, sometimes it does, and we use the plan as an excuse. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the members, I don't know that we need to soften this. Because it looks to me more like a consulting letter, a letter that I would write as a consultant to my, my client, saying, hey, these are the things you can do, this is what you paid me to tell you you can do. And that's not what I would, from this chair, what I would give to the board. What I'd rather give to the board is something definitive saying, this is what our plan is. You can either say you like it, or you don't like it and change it.
Commissioner Kapisinski, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's important to remember and focus on that the comprehensive plan is a broad framework. It is a broad guide. When verbiage is used that says that the board will implement a policy, or that the strategies will do something, that, that is a motive that something is definitely going to happen. We must remember that if there's a recommendation to the board, the board has to use a framework to consider many different things within the county. And things such as ordinances and policies allows the board to more specifically develop policies for the, for the county overall. The comprehensive plan is a broad framework. Also, the expectation of our citizens and anyone that lives here is that the planning commission is now dictating and saying, this board will do something, and you're giving them a directive. And we must remember that while the planning commission is a recommendation commission to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors is ultimately, that's the set of policymakers here. So when we're allowing for a broad framework, we have to encompass many different thought processes and skill sets, committees, and, and the coordinated efforts that the board has to undertake to ensure that the policies that they set are correct. So the comprehensive plan is a living and breathing document that allows for further growth and development with careful consideration. But it's not a specific directive, it's a broad framework.
So is this plan a planning commission recommendation to the board, or does this get approved by the board?
Well, even as planning commission, the planning commission should consider, this is going to be a document that you will use in accordance with the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, because those are more specific tools that have been formula, formulated because of the comprehensive plan. So this comprehensive plan is not going to box the planning commission, nor the Board of Supervisors into a specific goal set. I mean, once, if you, if the directive to the board is that they will implement something and they're definitely going to do something, the board may say, well, hold on. We, our comprehensive plans have always been broad to allow for public comment and the consideration and evaluation of each case and policy that may come before them. So it's just important to remember that while the planning commission needs to utilize the comprehensive plan and, and the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance when cases come before them, but you must remember, if, if something has been given a silo effect and a specific directive, it's going to be hard then to evaluate these cases because now you have a specific set that will not allow for an evaluation. So your comprehensive plan tends to be broad, it's like a vision statement. I mean, it's much more than just a vision statement, but in a broad manner, this is where the county could potentially see itself going. It also is a living document, so if things change along the way, because we all know the only thing that we can expect would be change. If it is now broad and each case can be evaluated, and the Board of Supervisors can set policy based upon that, then the growth plan will be able to take place a bit better. But if things are completely boxed in and completely black and white, and it says that we're going to implement strategies, we have to remember there are many different aspects to the decision-making that the board ultimately takes on, so.
Thank you for that context, thank you.
Am I right to say, we, it's a, basically it's a guideline? I mean, we, it's just a big guideline, I think it's what we, we need to look at.
That's my understanding, that it's a broad guide.
Does that answer your question, Pete?
It does, but it doesn't satisfy me. The, the issue is that, and I understand that a planning document is a planning document, okay? You put together a budget in a corporation, it's a planning document, it doesn't give everybody authorization to spend money. Okay, so my point is, when you get, when you, when you say that, you know, the, and there's, and I'll find it in a minute, but, you know, the county would, I think, I, I'm trying to think, with regard to water quality, something to the effect that we would either like to make sure that water quality remains, blah, 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 blah. I mean, that's really soft. I, I think the county is going to make sure that the water quality in these projects are going to be protected. You know, that, that kind of thing, to me, is way too soft, all right? So there may be some areas in here where you might say, okay, this is advisable to, or the county is being advised to, to do this. I, I don't have any problem with that. What I have a problem with is throughout this document, and I've got, I scribbled most of it, is it's the county may, or the county could, or the county might like to. Well, either we have a plan, or what you're doing is recommending that we put together a plan. When I read a consulting letter, that's what this sounds like. It sounds like a consulting letter. So again, you know, and, and, and I respect what you're saying, it's, it's got to be a broad document. But a planning document by, in and of itself, by its very term, is a broad document, all right? So quite frankly, there's nothing in here that says that everything is inviolate. You can, you can, you can definitely make plans. You can, you can, you can definitely make plans around the planning document, that's why it's a planning document, but...
That's what the board is allowed to do.
I understand that.
So just like consultant would write a letter, they're gonna write it broad because they're not the policymakers for locality. I certainly understand and respect your input, supervisor, Commissioner Kapcinski, but...
Let me, let me finish.
Sure.
I'm saying that the board, in my opinion, approves this plan. This is the board's plan. We're, we're helping to write it, but essentially the board approves this plan. So again, the board has, I mean, we're a recommending body, we know that, all right? There are things that came before us that are not in the comprehensive plan, that we made recommendations to the board to accept or to deny, and they've gone ahead and they've made their decisions. I don't think by making this thing as, as soft, and I'm not gonna say it's broad, it's soft, is you intend to make it with some of this language, that you're giving the board any more leeway. What you're doing is you're making it a softer recommendation document, and it's a board document. So I don't understand, if I sat on a board, I'd turn around and say, "Well, what do you mean, 'I might'?" Or, I mean, where's the will in this? Where, where is the intent? If you tell me I might do something, where's the intent?
Well, some of the words were "will implement."
Let me finish. If you have intent, if you have a plan, then you have intent. And my argument is, with the softness of this language, the intent is not there, that's all I'll say.
No problem. So after discussion, if there are any other members of the Planning Commission that feel that the recommendation need to be different or in align with what's been put in a red line, that's gonna be a discussion amongst all of you, and when we're ready to pass this forward and take action on it, that's where your recommendation will come in.
Okay.
Does that...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And as far as this is concerned, I like the language changes. As we, I wanted to say that. I appreciate the language, because they are recommendations and guidelines and not absolutes, because that means if we say "we will," then you need to put, by, put something measurable in there. By 2026, we will have this done. And so if we go into absolutes, and I'm just thinking about things when you write a grant, that you need to have something measurable and will do, and then you have to have a line. This gives you the flexibility to, the change in the, the language gives you flexibility. So I like the changes in the language.
Then, Mr. Chairman, may I respond? Because let me read something specific. It says Buckingham County may consider, may consider accommodating future growth in a manner that conserves vital resources. Why wouldn't they consider that?
That's okay.
It's not okay. Either they will consider it, in fact, I think they do consider it. I mean, in fact, that's what they're saying. Buckingham County should consider, all right? But they may consider, why would they not consider? I mean, think about it. Buckingham County may not consider accommodating future growth in a manner that conserves vital resources. Would you say that? Because if they may, they also may not. I don't understand that. That's the only argument I'm making. And if you go through this thing, there are a lot of areas that are confusing like that. So in certain areas, you may wanna say "they may," but in a lot of these areas, they're either gonna accommodate safety, or they're not gonna accommodate safety. They're gonna either accommodate growth, or they're not gonna accommodate growth. If you say "they may," well, then they also may not. Does that make sense? That's all my, that's the argument I'm making.
I think it's a verbiage. You know, the verbiage, you have to look at the whole picture. And the verbiage of it is saying that we will do something, or, you know, it's not gonna positively say that we're gonna do everything down, right by the book. I just think we have to allow a little bit of leeway there. But if we wanna bring it up later, before we pass everything, I'm, I'm open for it, okay?
I'm fine, yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
And if there are specific instances that you think maybe are, you know, more confusing with the updated language, you know, you can send those to me by email, and I can look at them, you know, case by case. But just in general, the, the directive was to make it more flexible in general.
Okay. All right, you've explained it, thank you, appreciate it.
So for the specific areas of focus, there were some changes made there. The revised section now mentions quarrying operations and emphasizes minimizing land use conflicts, and...
Where are we at, where are we at now? What page?
The specific focus areas.
I'm lost.
So it's after high-growth areas.
Mining, recreation, and parks, and wildlife.
Yep. So we're on mining now.
On growth?
It's right after high-growth areas, on page seven.
Okay, hold on. Okay. I got you.
And then the language was also adjusted to remain neutral and adhere to federal and state guidelines without explicitly stating support for any particular operation or industry. For recreation parks and wildlife, we included some broader strategies for preserving natural resources and providing recreational opportunities, such as designated protected areas and developing recreational facilities. For the rural agricultural and forestry areas, the revised section no longer mentions land use taxation and avoids promoting specific agricultural practices. Instead, it focuses on encouraging best practices and directing local farmers and foresters to available resources. In the watershed overlay district, the section now focuses on broader key policies without mentioning regular monitoring or enforcement. This approach aligns with the county's preference to maintain federal and state guidelines without creating any new policies. The Town of Dillon, I believe, is pretty much unchanged. And then for the sustainable growth principles, this was simplified to avoid listing specific strategies. The revised version emphasizes a general commitment to sustainable growth principles that promote economic, environmental, and social health without committing to specific actions. So overall, the updates reflect our commitment to incorporating community feedback and maintaining flexibility in the planning efforts. By refining the language and focusing on a broader strategy, we aim to create a comprehensive plan that balances growth with the preservation of Buckingham County's rural character. So I'm happy to take any more comments or suggestions.
Just one other question. Go back to page six, says by focusing on these principles. When you, when you're referring to these principles, are they the principles on page five? Or where, what principles are we talking about?
It's for the village centers. Sometimes when there are so many changes that are tracked, it gets, the formatting gets a little mixed up. But in the, the clean version of the document, that is a part of the village center areas. Portion of the section.
But what principles are we talking about? Are we talking about future development, and these villages may prioritize? Are those the principles we're talking about? What principles are you referring to? Says by, by focusing on these principles, Buckingham County aims to develop village centers that enhance the quality, blah, 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 blah. But what principles are we talking about?
It's, I think it's referring, I mean, it is referring to enhancing local infrastructure, maintaining rural character, and supporting local businesses.
Okay, so the principles that are listed above here. Okay, thank you.
Any more suggestions or comments for the land use revisions?
Anybody have anything, anything else on that? I don't think so.
All right, so then we can move to the special policy areas. So the special policy area is covered in this section, and this is something that, you know, open to suggestions if there should be other special policy areas considered. Do you all have this document as well?
What page is that on?
Part of the packet.
Oh, hold on.
It's Section 6.
Oh, I gotta get to another section.
Yeah, the next section was just the clean version of the edits.
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right, so in terms of which special policy areas are covered in this section, you know, we are open to revising the list or adding any special policy areas to the section. But as it is currently, we have maintaining the county's rural character, general zoning and subdivision ordinance revisions, corridor and high-growth area development, village center areas, affordable housing, solar energy development, and economic development. And these were derived from the Planning Commission meetings and the feedback given by the community in the survey and the community meetings. So for policy area number one, maintaining the county's rural character, this policy area focuses on maintaining Buckingham County's rural character. The area, this area emphasizes the importance of preserving our open spaces, agricultural lands, and forests, which are essential to the county's identity and economy. The recommendations suggest strategies for accommodating growth in a way that conserves vital resources, such as encouraging development in designated areas with adequate public services, and integrating open spaces into new development projects. Any comments or suggestions for policy area number one?
What is a TDR?
TDR.
I know what a PDR is, what's a TDR? Page three.
I did know when I wrote this. I thought that I had spelled it out, I had it above this somewhere. TDR.
TDR program.
I believe it was from the last comp plan as well. One second.
And it's okay to use these initials, but I'd like to have...
They should be spelled out.
Yeah, we oughta have it typed, so people know what you're talking about there.
So it's transfers of development rights.
The call?
Transfers of development rights.
Transfer of a development right, okay.
Yeah, I think it's a good suggestion to spell out any acronyms before they appear.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, if you could.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah. That was a...
I agree.
Dismissed that. Any other comments or suggestions for this policy area? All right, for policy area number two, general zoning and subdivision ordinance revisions. This area discusses the potential for revising the zoning and subdivision ordinances. The recommendations here suggest that a comprehensive review of zoning districts could help alignment with current and future land use needs. Also, there are suggestions for enhancing standards in agricultural and conservation zones to minimize impacts on traffic and the natural environment. These recommendations would support sustainable growth while maintaining the county's rural character. Comments or suggestions for the second policy area?
Anyone have any questions on number two? I don't think we do.
All right, we can go to number three, corridor and high-growth area development. This policy area addresses development along transportation corridors and in designated high-growth areas. The strategies here are designed to promote orderly growth by concentrating development in specific areas along major highways where existing infrastructure can support it. There's also an emphasis on access management and buffer zones to maintain the visual quality of these corridors while ensuring safety and efficiency. Any questions or comments or suggestions? All right, so the next policy area is village center areas. And this focuses on the development of village centers within Buckingham County. These centers are envisioned as vibrant hubs of activity that combine residential, commercial, and public uses, reflecting our rural identity while supporting local economies. The recommendations suggest enhancing infrastructure and supporting local, and supporting local businesses within the centers to create vibrant community spaces. Next policy area.
Before you, are we in four?
Yep.
I would refer to page eight, recommendations. The only thing I would recommend is making a language change here to ensure sustainable and balanced development in village centers. The following statements, following statements are considered but not limited to. So that gives you some flexibility.
Okay.
Up to the rest, but I mean, that'd be a suggestion.
Are you on recommendations on page eight?
Page eight, recommendations. To ensure sustainable and balanced development in the village centers, the following, the following strategies are considered but not limited to.
That seems to be, makes sense to me.
And when you go through these strategies, you might wanna, I mean, I can go through this with you later.
Okay.
Probably wanna take a look at some of the grammar, because you're pointing out, you're saying enhancing this, but then you go on and say it a different way in the same sentence, so I need to kinda cover that with you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or suggestions for that policy area? The next one is affordable housing, policy area number five. Bless you.
Bless you.
So this policy area highlights the importance of affordable housing in Buckingham County. The recommendations suggest strategies to address the affordability challenge, including potential zoning and subdivision ordinance revisions to allow for higher density, higher-density residential development in areas with adequate infrastructure. Also, there's a suggestion to explore partnerships with private developers and non-governmental organizations to support the development of affordable housing. Comments or suggestions or questions? The next policy area is solar energy development. The sixth policy area. Recommendations here suggest that the county could consider zoning ordinance revisions to facilitate solar projects while protecting valuable agricultural and forested lands. Strategies include suggestions for identifying suitable areas for solar development and assuring, ensuring that these projects align with community goals and environmental standards. This is one where I'm not sure. I've seen it in some other comprehensive plans, where they have a table that show the existing solar and energy projects that are ongoing in the county. I'm not sure if that's something that we would wanna include or not.
I can send that to you.
Okay.
Should we include that?
I didn't, I didn't have that information, but it's something that I've seen in other comp plans. But it's up to you, to you all if that's something that you would like to include or not.
I see you have some listed.
Yeah, that, that's basically what I was able to find for a little, with the little research. But I don't think it's a comprehensive list.
Anybody have any comments on that? Any other feelings on?
Page 11, I'd like to actually compliment you on designating suitable areas, including previously disturbed lands like brownfields and abandoned mines, could help balance. I think it's the first time I've seen that anywhere, and I think it's, I really think that's paramount in our county.
Yeah, I actually remembered, I think those comments were raised in the Planning Commission work sessions earlier. commission work sessions earlier. So, I tried to include it here.
I'm pleased you included that. I don't know how the others feel, but I think that's great.
There are also some recently written academic papers that suggest that as a positive way to encourage solar development. And then, any other comments or questions or suggestions? The next policy area is the last one that we have, economic development. And this section suggests Buckingham County leverage its strategic location and natural resources to promote sustainable economic growth. The recommendations include encouraging local business growth, investing into workforce development, and improving infrastructure to attract new businesses and industries. Any questions or comments or suggestions for this policy area?
I don't think we have anything.
So, in conclusion, the special policy area section of the comp plan provides a flexible framework for guiding future growth and development in Buckingham County. By considering these recommendations, we can support sustainable development while preserving the unique character and quality of life that define our community. That is what I have for the overview. So, I'm open to any other general comments or suggestions or questions.
Anyone have any more comments? I think I'll do it.
Well, if anything comes up, you know, I think, do you all have my email? You can send me an email with any comments or suggestions for feedback.
I think we need to send those forward to my, at least everybody, I mean, it seems to me there ought to be a central clearinghouse so that everybody knows what everybody else is thinking.
It's up to Nikki, if she wants you to send them to her.
Fine, and I'll send them directly to Tyler, and then everybody will have a, a copy, kind of a chain of information.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good of me.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Commission matters and concerns. Anybody have anything tonight?
I have a question for Nikki.
Yes, Pete.
We, we got, coming up, we got a commission meeting. Do we have a lot scheduled?
Uh, next Monday evening is the regular meeting. There will be an introduction and a public hearing.
Got all we have? Do you have anything that you'd like to bring up?
To add this evening, other than don't forget next Monday, six p.m.
Okay, thank you. If not, I would have a motion to adjourn.
I moved second.
Motion has been approved. We, we will adjourn.
All righty. I have a good one.
The end of the day, just kind of, I could just stretch out across the...